Political issues, far, far left, far, far right. And you see that in America, most people will be willing to fight over those ideas. So we have to respect as a republic the different views and opinions that people have. Nevertheless, I'm a conservative, I'm a Christian, I've got my ideas and I host a podcast. And one of the things my son and I felt that was so important is that we connect with people in our community as well on all the issues that are popping up. Now, I do know this, none of us are right on every issue. None of us have the exact idea about how things should be done. So there are times we've got to sit back and think about what we're saying and find better avenues to accomplish goals and things in our community. So I want to give you just a few more minutes for a few more folks to get in here. But we do have a mic, we want you to come and share your ideas about what you think is happening in our community. Because really, it's the people that matter, it's not politicians. It's people that are in our neighborhoods, people at the grocery store, people who fix our car. Well, how is life affecting them in a positive or negative way? One of the big things that we hear so much of in our community, they write here in pickets, and pretty much throughout the entire state, and that is the problem with traffic and overcrowding. You can't go anywhere and talk to a local who's not going to bring that problem up and say, "Man, what's happened to our community?" Everybody likes some growth, but growth is hard to measure in terms of how are we going to build infrastructure, how are we going to educate people? Those become topics and situations that do have to be addressed. A lot of times, we don't have answers for those things. But I think if you polled probably a thousand people in Pickens County, nine hundred would say that is the number one issue in our community. And I think that there's no one in our community that hasn't noticed that when you pull out on these roads, it's terrible. It's almost like we're living on Luther Road these days where traffic is just everywhere. I know when I leave my office a lot of days, I like to turn left and, you know, my wife and I go somewhere to eat, but we pretty much have to just keep taking that right now out of our driveway because during the day, this little bypass here is just bumper to bumper with traffic. And then you get out on 123 and other places, you just wonder, wow, how did we get here? And so those are some things we're going to talk about. You know, we love everybody in America, Americans are Americans, it doesn't matter what state you live or see, we love everybody. May not agree, but as Americans, we have a common goal, and that is to protect our homeland and to build a future for our family. I don't think there's anybody here tonight that doesn't want a better future for their children. And in our minds, we know how we think that should look. And so we have to fight for our causes and our belief system. So let me say, first of all, I appreciate some of our elected officials here. Oh, I think we're going to come in at some point, but right now, it's good to have Donna, City Council Lady, appreciate her being here. And it's always been to have Rex at our State Center. Let's give these folks appreciation. I can say this about Rex, Rex is always involved in the community, and that says volumes about an elected official. One of the things that I don't like is people to get elected and never be accessible. We want to talk to our leaders. One of the things you see in America today is the fight on free speech. And what Kamala said, "We're all about free speech." And then she gets on the public and says, "But we've got to limit social media because hate speech should not be, people should not be granted the right to do hate speech." And, you know, then you've got Tim Walz jumping on that van wagon, I'm sitting there thinking, wow, so hypocritical. They want free speech as long as it's the language that they say it should be and all the issues that they are promoting, but anything different, they want to shut it down. And so we live in a world where people want to limit what we have to say. And we know how that works for many countries, it doesn't go very well for us. So I'm all about free speech, I don't care if you're hollering, screaming, cussing, yanking, turning tables over, I think free speech is free speech. I was telling Donna, just a few months ago, when I was on the Planning Commission, you know, we have guys show up at those, many of them show up at those Planning Commission meetings, and sometimes you'd have, you could tell folks, maybe they weren't the highest educated, and just, you know, just little solid earth people, they come in screaming, pounding their fist and yelling and, you know, then you've got another guy who may be a well-educated person who's very polished. Here's my position, I don't care what your background is or where you're from, free speech is free speech. I don't care how you present it, you have a right in this country to talk about the things that are bothering you. Doesn't have to be perfect, doesn't have to be grammatically correct, but you bear that right as a citizen of this country. And we should all take our time to let people say what's on their minds. So that's my position on it. And so I started these town halls, and I'm going to do one about every two months, and we want to invite the public to come out and share any grievances or problems that they're facing. It's a good time to talk to elected officials, talk about what we're doing and how we're doing it. And hopefully, we could come up with some better ideas in good ways, we can manage our community better. And I'll say this, nobody wants the federal government involving in local politics. We don't want Big Brother to come down here and start telling us what we need to do. And that's, if that's the case, then we need to do a good job at it, what we are entrusted with. We need to make sure that the government's giving us this right, that we're doing everything we can to be good stewards of it, and we're doing the best we can do to represent the most people in our community and give everyone a voice. So I want to just start with a prayer, if I can do this. So let's just bow our heads a moment and ask God's blessings upon our wise Father. We thank you for your love and your mercy and kindness, and thank you for the privilege to gather together today to just have a conversation about our community, the community that you've given us the right to live in. We ask your blessings, give us wisdom, Father. You said, "If any man lacks wisdom, let him ask him," or asking you for guidance and direction, and we thank you for that in the wonderful, powerful name of Jesus Christ. Amen. So if I have anything else to say, let me say to you, first of all, thank you for being here, and I appreciate you taking our time to spend about an hour together to talk about our community. Pickens County is a great community, I've been here over 20 years and I love this place, plan on dying here. I do a podcast because I like to talk about national politics, I like to talk about state politics, and I like to talk about the local politics. Two things are always driving politicians and leaders. One is just being retroactive. You're in that position, you're not going to make any changes, you're not going to do anything to rock the car, and I don't want to be out here trying to make a change, somebody's not going to like it, they won't vote me in next year. They're just retroactive thinkers, just do what you've got to do to get by burner time. Then there are proactive leaders. Proactive leaders are the kind that see a problem and they want to do what? They want to fix it. What is the unique thing about Donald Trump? He's a problem solver. Anybody that's in business doesn't stay in business long if they don't fix problems, right? You can't build a company letting problems lie around without solutions. And so one of the great things we learn about Donald Trump is that you can be a leader, but you need to be a leader that fixes problems. And if you don't do that, then really, you just took a position, you're just occupied, not accomplishing anything. And so we want to talk about in our community, how do we fix problems? How do we get on the same page and make sure that what we're doing represents the people of our community? I like what goes on in Washington in the sense that I like participating in the political role, but also like what's going on in my community. I want to talk about two things real quick, and then we're going to open the floor for some discussion. So you start getting some thoughts in your mind about things that you'd like to ask and share, and we have some folks here that are elected leaders that may can address those issues. And if it's not in their will of thought, then we're going to post it on the podcast, and maybe we can get some better answers for it. Because we've gone through some elections, but everything's not fixed yet, and we've got to continue to move forward on that. One of the things that I have a passion about is, let me get this car right here, excuse me, is something called the Upstate Rail Project. I started this project a couple of years ago, and it's about recognizing a second form of transportation in the upstate. Right now, we have 85 that sort of ties the five boroughs together, which is Clemson, Easly, you have Greenville, Greer, and Spartanburg. And if you don't have 85, we've got to take the basic 123, Wayhamp and Boulevard, which are horrible to drive on. And so we've got to think about 20 years down the road. How will we address issues in our community other than just saying, hey, go buy a car? It's not as easy as it used to be, cars now $35,000, $40,000, $50,000. It's an expense. So I started this project just talking about it'd be nice to start casting vision and thinking about a light rail system, that a train that would use our current tracks that would travel from Clemson into Easly, into Greenville, into Greer, and into Spartanburg. And it would just be a commuter train that would help transport people to the airport, to BMW if you want to go downtown Greenville, if you've got an appointment at the doctor's office in Spartanburg. And I've talked to a lot of businessmen about that, and, you know, I've got overwhelming support for it, that, you know, it is not going to happen today, we know that, but, you know, you can't build the pyramids in a year, and you can't accomplish anything that quick. And sometimes we want to deal with what's in front of us, but we have to learn to walk and chew gum and know that there are things that we need 20 years down the road. And how do we start having that conversation about fixing problems? Because we can do this, people say, "Well, that's too hard." Well, you know, Europe's been doing this for 50, 100 years, China's done it, India's doing it. All these countries have learned light rail systems are very, very powerful and connecting people together. And it gives young girls who have a child who are divorced, single, a way to get around through different boroughs, people to get to the airport, senior citizens that can't afford cars. So there's a reason they're very successful. And you're seeing these pop up in places like Charlotte, they're trying to hit them all over Florida now, because those are just good ways of bringing crowds instead of using our current roads as a secondary form of transportation. So you're going to be hearing more about that, I do have a website you can go to, it's called the Upstate Rail Project, appreciate you looking at it. I know everyone's got a different opinion about things, I know those things are expensive, but paving, 85's expensive too. Maintaining those roads, it's billions of dollars. So we have to think about other alternative ways of transportation in our community. And if you notice, Pickens doesn't have an interstate. That's one of the sad things about our community, is that it prohibits us from finding easy access to different places. One thing that we do know, and that is that growth is still going to happen in the South. There's no models that say it's going to stop, it's going to continue to grow. So what you have today will more likely intensify every year. Some reports say that we could have as many as 1.5 million people move here over the next five years. If you put 50,000 people along Pickens County, I don't have a home. But rumor has it, they're coming, and every day you see more and more people moving to the South, moving into our communities. And we're going to talk about the overcrowding in a moment, but it is, it is a reality we've got to deal with, so we've got to find second resources. Another thing I want to just throw at you is that how many notice that there are trains that stop and block our city almost every day? And some days, it is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in my life. And a lot of people just say, "Well, we don't know what to do about it, we can't fix it. We have no way, the railroad will not pay us any attention." And I get that, they have their own lobbies in Washington, and they have a lot of power and authority, but there's always a workaround in anything that you deal with. One of the things that's amazing is the little underpass that's here in front of the YMCA. How many of you have ridden through that thing and lived to tell about it? How many enjoy it? I mean, I've been cussed out on the road, and I've been, I say, "Look, I'm just trying to take my turn here." And so it is very frustrating, but I would like to think about us talking about, with elected officials and our leaders, the idea of creating another overpass for the train. You're never going to stop the trains. Matter of fact, this is an extremely busy train system through Easly, it really divides our city up, and a lot of people wind up sitting for a long period of time trying to figure out how to get around the train. Like, if you're having a heart attack, or you've got an emergency, you've pretty much got to come down here to Walmart to turn and to get back to the hospital, which it is a way, but it's not the best way. Because when that track is being blocked, this road out here over at Walmart is very, very busy, and so it just makes things very inconvenient. So it's a way to solve some of those problems. I would like to talk about the idea of expanding that underpass, either something over it or making it a two lane under it. And, you know, that's what engineers are for, that's why I made it in college to figure those things out, how to do it. And I think you can do that. I mean, my goodness, if 5,000 years ago, they could build the pyramids, I'm sure in the 24th century, we're sending people to the moon, we ought to be able to figure out how to make things a little better for us. But it takes leadership and willingness to take on projects to say, you know, "That's a good idea, let's have a conversation about it." And great things start with conversations, just talking about it, saying, "Hey, you know, yet we need to do that, those are things our city needs, and these are things that would help us to progress and make life just easier for the people in our community." And so I want to start by saying, if there's some issue that you have, that you would like to address, we've got a microphone here, just stand up and just take your time, share with us what you want to say. And the floors are open, when I'm talking, just take the microphone, talk about what you're seeing that needs to be dealt with or that you'd like to talk about in our community. Now, we may have some people writing in, calling, it's okay, but whatever you like to say, this is the place to say it. This is not a political venue, this is a town hall for people to talk about what's on their mind, what's on their heart, what's bothering them, and what they can do to make life a little better for them. So floors open, have at it, we appreciate you addressing any issues that you have.
Hey, how are you?
Great.
A couple of the things that you spoke about were the things that I could plan to bring up. One of them is, is not just the overcrowding and overdevelopment, but the shortsightedness of so many municipalities, that it seems like they salivate like Pavlov's dogs over the idea of, "Oh, gosh, more communities, more homes, more taxes, look what we can do with that." But it's such a fallacy, because when you have more and more homes, homes to rent, town halls, enormous apartment complexes, what you are doing is choking the area that's being developed. If the infrastructure is not addressed ahead of time, it becomes harder and harder and harder to deal with it. We all know that the traffic around here is beyond ridiculous, and we all know that when these housing developments come in, we talk about impact fees and how the developers are going to be paying these impact fees. If that isn't one of the biggest baskets of full biscuits I've ever heard, because those developers are not paying the impact fees. Those impact fees are being added to the cost of every single home that they built. So the buyers are paying those impact fees. Then you've got to add your public services, trash collection, fire, EMS, police. You've got to concern yourself with wastewater, stormwater. All these things need to be addressed. And unfortunately, there are people who don't look ahead and see these things happening and just let it go on and think, "Oh, just look what we're going to make in taxes." Well, you know what? Remember that ad campaign when we were kids that said, "Just say no"? Yeah, just say no, I'm sorry, we're full, we're full. All of these apartment complexes, homes to rent, trying to bring people here, for what? For what? The local, local elected officials in a lot of cases, they are not looking around at the people who voted them into office and what they want. They're looking at bringing new people in without having any idea of the problems that's going to bring. And I'm going to guess right now that most of our elected officials are not getting tons of letters from their constituents saying, "You know what? There's a big pasture by me, and I really think we should put 30 or 40 homes in there." I just don't think it's happening. And zoning seems to be a really bad word, and people associate that with loss of personal property rights. But self-zoning, self-protection, thinking of the future, those are important things that we need to consider. My husband and I live on 100 acres of homestead. We croak hay, we graze cattle. That land gets developed, cows don't eat, cows don't live. So there's 30-plus head of bulls, cows, heifers, steers, that won't be feeding people if all of that land is developed. So these are things that we need to think about, and we need to think about it now. To say that there's been a moratorium on certain types of building, that's great, but they need to buckle down and, forgive my language, but grow a cent of balls and say no.
Thank you. Would any of our elected officials here like to respond to that? Where are we at on infrastructure in Pickens County?
Suck.
What's your thoughts on it, Rex? What's your thoughts on our infrastructure? I know we've got a $100 million project on 183, the four lane of that, which would be the northern end of Easly, but what else do you see that we can do to lighten the load of all the traffic that we're facing in the community? Traffic, say it for me?
Yes, sir. I mean, short of building a new road somewhere, I don't see that you'd do anything. I mean, years back, I felt like there had to be a bypass that came around from Easly I stood, it came around at 153. Yeah. I thought a bypass, actually, in my mind, a bypass, and, you know, again, this deals with development. Do you want to build a bypass because you're going to develop it once you build it? You know, that's what people complain about the 153 extension, is it's going to be developed. But people are coming here anyway, so do you want to plan for them, or do you want to let them come here and then try to figure out how to deal with it? If you let them come here and then try to figure out how to deal with it, you can't because you're now going through houses that have been built. So it's a chicken and egg issue.
Donna, you want to share any thoughts on it? Donna's one of our city council ladies, so.
The other thing right now that I want to say is that the city is having, well, the meeting that I posted across the board, I believe it's October 24th, but please check the website to make sure of it, if people don't show up for this zoning rewrite, you're going to get what somebody else wants. This is a chance for all the citizens to put their input on what Easly is supposed to look like. And that also includes businesses. I'm having an issue with, you know, these same businesses popping up all over the place because somebody's going to go out of distance and that's not going to look good for the city. But I do encourage everybody to show up for this public input. They're going to hold two sessions, one in the morning and one in the evening. But please check the city's website, you may have to find it under the planning tab to see when that meeting is going to be, but I haven't heard the exact date, but I thought somebody said October 24th.
Yeah, we'll post them on our website, too.
Thank you.
So, issues. 123 is going to look horrible in 10 years, unless we can do some demographic studies on it to determine who has the best idea about lessening that impact on our residents. Right now, if you get out there in front of U2, it's a nightmare. I mean, it's a, some rooms, you just, you just sit there. So I don't see that obviously changing, it's just more likely to get worse as more people projectively are going to move into this community. Those numbers are still pretty high, as far as I can look in research, people are still flowing into the South and are going to continue to do that. And it's hard to stop this, it's very hard to say to people, "You can't come into our community." So one of the things that we want to talk about as in some of these open forums like this, is what would Easly look like in 10 years? Well, you're going to have another, probably 50,000 to 80,000 people move into this community. Just think, if you have 1.5 million projected to come to the upstate, that's typically from Gaffney to Seneca. If you, you know, Greenville and Spartanburg will get the biggest chunk of that, but those that can't afford to live, they're going to move into communities like Pickens and Anderson and Seneca and Gaffney, and just if you've just got a small percentage of that, where would we put those people at? So those are scary numbers, and it makes us wonder, how are we, do we just go with this blindfolding? Do we just wait, let it sort of see what happens, or do we want to talk about how we will handle those kinds of growth schedules that could come into our community over the next 10 or 15 years, which would make this place very complicated to live in? I mean, almost uninhabitable if you have a car to try to get across town today, and right now, it's difficult. And I go downtown Main Street, it's sometimes 10, 12 minutes to get there, just waiting between trains and traffic to be able to get through here, so that's only going to get worse. So what are some suggestions? I hear a lot of people talk about this problem, does anybody have a solution, how we're going to handle growth in Pickens County? It's easy to say, "My leg's broken, why ain't I go back?" I'm going to walk around and lay it.
Well, I've been fortunate to live in some pretty big cities in our state and in other states, Charlotte, Charleston, Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant dealt with what we're going through now 30 years ago. And one of the things they did, once you hear, like we are hearing, that the people are coming, they built, put together a committee, a team that's led by the mayor, which I don't see tonight, I'm sure she was invited, and I hope in the future she'll be invited, and I hope in the future she'll come. Because that leader needs to be here more than anyone. And the mayor led that in Mount Pleasant, and they are able to deal with those growth that's happened there every time. They put more points in for short periods of time so they could manage what they were doing. But what do we have in plan? I don't care of anything and what our future is, but our growth of our people coming in and our roads. I moved here 10 years ago from Charleston, and we have five times the amount of cars on 123, you can't pass through there at lunchtime or at the 5 o'clock hour. 153, the extension was supposed to take some of that off, and Rex is 100% right. If we don't plan to have some sort of bypass to take it off of 123, it's only going to get worse. So I guess I have a question that's also a statement, what's the plan? Who's putting together this plan? Is there one? Do we have people in the office that has the foresight to say, "Okay, we've got to do this"? Again, we're the city leader.
Well, it has to be conjunction of all of our leadership in the community, and sometimes we don't really deal with anything until it becomes catastrophic or to the point where it's mulling over. It's good to have foresight and know that having times to discuss things like this with the community, it's very, very critical, because if you, like I say, if you polled people, you're going to get about nine out of 10 that say, "This is the biggest issue we're facing in our community, and how do we solve it? What do we do to lessen this traffic?" I can tell you one thing you're going to have to look at, you're going to have to look at some sort of secondary source of transportation. Everybody's realizing that you just can't, you just can't move this many people around with just cars. You've got to have some kind of light rail system or something to give people better options to get around town. That's what major cities do. You go to DC, it'll drive your car, you get on the metro. You go to New York, you know, you get on the metro, because it just moves millions of people a day without putting them up in the street. And so those are things, that may not even be the answer, but it's starting to say, "Here's something we can do to start moving forward with answers." You've got to be able to, like, you don't need a train blocking half of Easly for an entire half a day while people are just having to do workarounds, and I don't think that's healthy, and it's not, in my opinion, well-planned. We can fix those kinds of things, we can start on something that down the road is going to have better answers. I think you have to look at the fact that growth more likely will come. I don't, I don't see us being able, I don't see the fortitude among leadership to stop it, I don't know legally that you can stop it. How do you tell somebody not to live here? How do you get some money from New York that they can't buy a home in our community? You can't tell them that. How do you tell people you can't build a home? It's extremely complicated to do that, and it would actually be illegal if you did that. So what is the answer to that? I think we need to, the only answer to that really is to get politically more balanced across the country, where we're not promoting defunding the police, where crime is off the hook. Most people leave these big cities, the number one reason is the crime. I was in Chicago, went to the RNC, my wife and I spent four days there, everybody we talked to said, "Don't go out at night, be careful, watch your back." I said, "Look, I'm in a five-star hotel downtown, what am I going to be afraid of?" They said, "Oh, Hilton put in a precinct just a month ago because of the crime, everywhere bar none, that's all the people talked about." I don't care if I was in a Uber or a cab, if I had, talking to the concierge, if I was in a restaurant, talking to a waiter, that's all, everybody was talking about was crime in Chicago. And I thought it was the bulls they liked, but they were, hey, this- And I thought it was the bulls they liked, but they were, hey, this, we want to get out of here, it's too dangerous. Uh, and, and so the point is that a lot of these people in these big cities are afraid to raise their families there. The cost of living, the taxes, the cold weather, come down here and buy a house for half price. And you're not going to do things in Easely that you do in Chicago. Can we get an amen? I think somebody already saw about that. And so, uh, and I'm just being a little bit humorous there, but you know, the South is going to tolerate that. You know, you're not going to get it so bad around here where somebody's going to say, hey, that's not working for us, we police our own too, so. Uh, but more likely, if you don't change the landscape politically across the world, people just say, I got to get out of these big cities, they're too dangerous. And where are they coming? They're coming to where they believe it's a little bit safer. And our crime rates are very low and people are going to say, you know, this is where I raised my family. I've never met anybody from New York City to Chicago that came down here and they did like it. I've not met any. They all, we love it, we love it, we never leave it, calling our families in. So if that's a wave of the future, how are we going to handle that? Politically, on a national scale, you've got to have tougher rules on crime. And be able to make it safe for people up north to feel comfortable to live in these big cities, then they won't want to come out of here as much. Am I wrong? What do you think? So we have a national issue to talk to national leaders about how they're going to strengthen their communities against these crimes. Then I think that is the only way you'll ever put a brake on that. But the more you have this left ideology that says that criminals can be arrested for violent crimes and the next morning be released, most people like us that live up there say, I'm not raising my family, this, so they come here. So how do you fix that? You've got to have a better national political leadership to stop that. Immigration is a mass, is a massive issue in North now. Not so much down here, we have problems down here, but then up north they're having a tough time with it. And look at what's going on in Chicago, so how do you deal with, with issues like that? So when we talk about solutions, it has to start nationally. And locally, we have to say, to, there, there's a danger in what can happen to us on a national scale. If you stop all the crime in big cities and they stop coming down here, there's a chance that a lot of people that have moved down here might move back. What would that do to the real estate market here? Would crash it. You have massive subdivisions emptying because all the people that moved said, you know what? Chicago's safe now, New York is safe now, I'm going back up there. So now you have a migration that is exiting our community and you have all these homes we built that will start uh devaluing very, very quickly. So what do you do then? I mean, there's, so there's a lot of things we've got to think about. Overbuilding is not always the best answer. Because if they, if, if you have a migration back up north, financially, it's going to cause us a lot of problems here in the South. Ten, twenty years, it could, we could be having this conversation about, what are we going to do about all these empty neighborhoods? What are we going to do about these streets? Ain't nobody living on that street, there's fifteen homes, they're all empty. Well, that can happen just as quick as when people moved in, people can do what? They can move out. So we need to fix the problems of the big cities by strengthening criminals from committing these crimes. But is that going to pave the way for people to go back home? I don't know. Uh, but those are things we've got to think about. And we have to think about how do we, how do we handle the traffic so that we can keep the small town feel? But at the same time, you know, be able to accommodate what's happening. Uh, we either have to widen roads, we either have to build more roads, but see, that's a state issue. We've got to get that money from the state, Pickens County and the city can't pay for any of that. Or we can barely pay the roads we have in the county, right, Rex?
That's correct.
Barely, barely pay them. If you're going to pay road, you got to pay this year, you'll probably die before everyone gets paid again. So that's life. So how do they build new roads? The city, people go to the city and say, build new roads, build infrastructure, the city can't do any of that. The county can't do any of that. So we have to resort to what? We have to go to the state, to the federal government to try to figure out ways of getting funds for these roads. But it's a hundred million dollars to do one eighty-three from Maria just up here to one thirty-five. It's not even going all the way to Pickens. It's a hundred million dollars. Twenty years ago, that would have been twenty million. So you wait another ten years, it's a hundred and fifty million. So these costs are just going up unbelievably every year. I mean, look at what we're seeing in our labor force and what it costs to operate on daily day uh operations just for our states and our local governments. So this is just going to continue to be a problem. And I will say this, raising taxes isn't the answer either. Because who pays the price when you raise taxes? I will give you a scenario, I'm a property owner, I'm a lot of real estate, I make my money off renting homes. Well, when you raise taxes like the, the eighteen percent, uh eighteen, it was an average of eighteen, I think it was like five point six or what was that mileage they moved it to, Rex? Uh, it was astronomically high. I know why they did it because they needed money to pay the roads. And we've got roads that, you know, you, you know, that are, got massive problems with our roads. It's, it's going to fix roads and make it better for the county. But at the other hand, the next problem you're facing is that it's like me. When I get a tax bill that's uh two thousand dollars and I'm at, I'm at a six percent uh tax rate, so now I'm paying, it says two thousand, it's twenty-eight hundred. I mean, I got to deal with eight hundred more dollars. You do that on a lot of homes, it's like, well, you know, that's just eating away. What do businesses do? They pass it on to the consumer. So if you're making twenty bucks an hour, you're working at a local uh business around here, your rent's going to go up. And how many know rent has gone up over thirty percent right here in Pickens? Across the board. A one-bedroom apartment over here behind Walmart's like, what, fifteen hundred bucks? Who could pay that? But the cost, the taxes. And so when you raise taxes, you have to understand that that typically is going to bite back on local, the poor people in our community, the working class. So raising taxes isn't always an answer. I know they've talked about a four percent mileage change in the city. Well, you know, I know, I know we need money to operate the city, but who's going to pay for that? With those taxes just keep bumping up and up and up. And the people that pay the biggest price are your local businesses, your restaurants, uh property owners, apartment complexes. So what do y'all do? McDonald's just adds another dollar on to Big Mac. You know, rent just goes up, light bill goes up, costs everything costs more. So who are the most impacted because of tax increases? The poor. The everyday working guy. Most people that are, got good, we can absorb some of that, but when you're poor, you're making twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour. You know, for me to say that is shocking. Sixty-five years old, twenty, twenty-five dollars an hour's welfare rent. But you know, years ago, like, hey, you make twenty-five bucks an hour, what do you do for a living? You're a heart surgeon? Now it's like, you can't get nobody to sweep for twenty bucks an hour, hardly. And so things have changed. And so, so how do, how do we help people who are poor? Because here's what's going to happen in Pickens County and in Easely, and it's happening now, it's only going to get worse. People that are renting homes are going to find that it's impossible to make a living and pay rent on the basic salary that will be paid from Pickens County. Twenty dollars an hour will not rent a home in Pickens County. There's just not enough, you can't take twenty dollars an hour and pay rent, you can't do it. Now, if your wife's making twenty, you can survive, but that means it's a double household income again. But one person making twenty bucks an hour is not going to be able to afford to rent a home in our county. And that's only going to get worse. Every year, it's going, the wages are not keeping up with what the cost of rent is because of, well, tax increases, inflation, all these things that we're seeing. So how do we get out of that? We can't. It's, it's a, it's a uh Achilles heel in terms of trying to resolve it. Unless we sit down and have some really, really tough conversations about that. I know that one of the things that you're going to hear a lot about in D C in the next several years is building affordable housing. How many know what the TIF is? I know Dom, you've probably heard of the TIF, the tax, they're talking about that in, in Clemson. What are your thoughts on that?
What is it?
It's a tax that specializes in helping municipals develop certain things for the public. Like this TIF in, in Clemson is to raise, I think, thirty million dollars to be able to build structures to offer people lower income housing. Uh, and I think you have to, I'm, I'm, I may not be correct, but all of us think you've got to get a bond issued to get the money, to raise the money. And then, once it's paid for, some of those profits would go back to the municipals and the people that invested in it. But it's a long-term problem because then it would be public property. Uh, I suppose, I, I think I might have said that correctly. But a lot of people oppose the TIF because they feel like that, the one, at least the one in Clemson, because we need help here in Easely. But if you, if you put a thirty million dollar project in Easely, you've got a building project, you've got a massive apartment complex. I was talking to a school coordinator this week and they were telling me that they need to, we need, that the school system would like to be able to find affordable housing for teachers and for, and for people that are a part of the public school system, uh even firemen, all municipal workers. Well, you know, it's going to cost you about two hundred dollars a foot to build an apartment. It's right at the current rate right now. Buy the land, build and develop, you do it for two hundred foot, you're probably doing good. But you know, if you look at that on a thousand square foot home, when you do those numbers, you s, you, you have a very, very high mortgage on that or investment on that. So it's going to take some people with some short numbers to know how you're going to take an average of a fifteen hundred dollar rent like we're seeing in some of these apartment complexes. What are you going to get it down to? Fourteen hundred, thirteen hundred? That's not going to help anybody. Uh, what are you going, you're trying to get down to eight hundred, who's going to build these apartments? Because the material cost and the land development is higher than that. So those are some of the things I'm scratching my head on, I haven't seen enough paperwork to convince me that fa, affordable housing would work under those numbers. But I'm sure somebody out there is lost smart, maybe I'm just likely to see the paperwork on it. How are you going to advance people uh by building a project, putting in funds for it and then dropping that rate once affordably? Because there are more eight hundred dollar complexes out there anymore. They're all a thousand, I'm in low, low, low wind on a thousand, but an average of fifteen hundred for, excuse me. What are some of your thoughts on that? Because some, like, how are y'all handling that in the city, Dom?
I, I honestly, I don't know, that has not come up yet.
You're going to hear a lot about it because one of the things you're seeing because of the high inflation rate and the high increase in homes and in real estate or in rental properties is the government is trying to figure, how do we get housing down? So that, you know, if you're making twenty-five dollars an hour, instead of paying fifteen hundred, you can get a two-bedroom maybe for eight hundred. Or maybe those numbers are a thousand. And you're going to see money being used to, given to developers to create those projects. Uh, but they've got, they come with another backlog too, because now you've got problems with creating low-end apartments and we know what happens. And now all of a sudden, you've got a sore eye in the community where you're having more issues. Not that poor people create them, but you're going to have, uh, the education's going to be less, the response uh of, of managing them personally is going to drop. And so you can have a world of other problems with that. Rex, any thoughts on this?
Well, you said something that bothers me.
Okay, go ahead.
You said, you said the government is supposed to get the price down. I think anytime you let the government control something like that, you got a problem.
You do.
I think you've got to have competition to get price down.
Well, you can be, and, and, and I think what's going to happen is the federal government's going to offer long-term loans to projects that where interest rates are going to be a whole lot better than the seven percent current market rate. Uh, I think that they'll open it up to bid, but the cost of construction is still high. One of the biggest things that builders have, have been hit with is inflation as well. I mean, look what two before was raining, O S B of just half inch. I remember it was eight dollars before COVID, it's eighteen to twenty, twenty-two dollars now. And it hasn't come down any. Uh, building costs on H A C units has almost doubled in the last four or five years. Uh, shingles are thirty-five dollars, just one half, I remember it was six dollars. So you're going to pay like a hundred bucks for uh just one square shingles. You add all those costs, just because the government gives you a low interest rate doesn't mean you can buy shingles cheaper. And so building cost is still going to be, my opinion is at least two hundred dollars a foot. If you break that down into what I call one, two, three bedroom homes, you're still going to have a lot of money in that building project, even if you build it out. What do you think, Rex?
I, I think, I, I still think you're, I think you're going down the wrong track. If you want to do something, it's got to be the private sector doing it. And it's got to be the private sector saying that we're willing to come in here and help people uh provide low-income housing. But we need some kind of benefit. In other words, if we're going, if we're going to invest the money, give us a tax credit.
Well, that's what, but one of the federal programs out here now is, and, and the reason I say the federal government will do it, will print this money and they put it into the uh community for developers to bid for. One of the things they're, they're trying to do right now is say that if you go in and you develop property uh and if you're willing to put it in the low rental rate markets in undeveloped areas, that you can take that money, the capital gains that you make on it, and you can set it aside and not pay taxes on it for four or five years. Or maybe they may abolish it altogether, so a developer would have an incentive to borrow that money to build in what we call lower end areas and be able to turn that money back over to a private sector for management. And at the same time, uh, if, if they sold it, the profits they made, they could put it into a, a, a trust fund or something. So that would be good to some degree, but the problem is it doesn't change the building cost maybe more than four or five percent. Because if you, go ahead, Rex.
No, I was saying, I, I think anytime you're waiting on the federal government.
I understand.
And, and I think if you're, if you're thinking long-term, the federal government is going to answer.
But it's not.
Because it's, it's, it's going to crash.
I understand that.
We, we, we've got too much debt right now. And they've got too many regulations on us, and we've got to remove those regulations. We've got to separate, they need to read the Constitution.
Right.
And there's a, there's a limited amount of work that the federal government should do based on the Constitution.
I agree, a thousand percent.
And they need to get out of our hair.
But here's my opinion, we're not, we're going to go into it. I think if even Trump wins, I think that there's still going to be a lot of people. Because the problem, the political issue here today is housing. People can't afford housing. And uh, you're out of college and you're trying to buy a place, who, who could pay fifteen hundred bucks for one bedroom? Even twelve hundred. The average income around here is less than twenty. And so you can see that people from up north who sell their home for a million dollars can easily come back here and buy a home for five hundred thousand. Even six hundred, it's not going to hurt them, but you can give a good home for three hundred thousand here, even two fifty. And so the issue here is, if that's the case, then uh you're going to see people who are poor and the average worker here, they're not going to be able to compete with the money coming from up north. So what's going to happen to us? We've got, that's an issue that we're going to face, we're facing here right now. I get calls all the time, hey, can I make this song for a thousand? No, mortgages more than that on that. Well, how are we going to live and make twenty-two dollars an hour? You can't, I don't know what to tell you, I don't, there's not a program. But the government's trying to create a program and they're already doing it and it's already in operation. Now, if they knew that, that, that doesn't mean we've got to participate in as a community, but we've got to find the private sector or somebody that can come in and say, how are we going to help people who are making twenty bucks an hour find a home that they can live in? And that's the issue. How, how do you sustain the, the working man's salary to a place where he can afford to live comfortably and survive in it? And without that, they're going to leave this community. And when you need that guy or that lady, you're not going to help them. Who's going to wait on our tables? Who's going to uh build our homes? Who's going to work on our cars? Who's going to change your oil? Who's going to cut your grass? If these people have to leave our community, what are we going to do? You're just going to have a massive, massive uh inflation because you have no competition. Who's doing it and name their price, so that then affects all of us again. So what's the answer to that? It's very, very complicated. But that's a conversation we still have to have in our community. Because if we don't see it coming down in ten years, we're going to be so deep into this, these people are going to be gone. They have to leave our community and go somewhere else and work with them and live it. That's what I'm saying. I don't agree with the federal government getting involved in it. But the, again, that's why we've got to have more innovative ideas. We've got to be able to think on our feet, a little faster, a little sharper and say, look, here's something that will help alleviate the problems. Here's something we can do to bring more people in, to make housing more affordable. Now, I will say this, and our time is, is ended. Every, almost every apartment complex that you see being built now has some federal money tied to it. Almost every single one of them. Corporations can buy and build and use them as a tax write-off by discounting that rent a little bit to making it a little bit more affordable for people. The problem is, if you qualify, it's a fourteen hundred month apartment, one bedroom, you get it for like thirteen hundred. You don't get a big discount on it, I guess they think that's big. But rent needs to be at about a thousand dollars a month for people making twenty bucks an hour. Because if you go twenty, that's eight hundred a week, that's thirty-six hundred a month. Typically, uh, if you use the quarter of that for rent, you need to be a, a thousand dollars, twelve hundred is all you can handle. Then you got to take taxes out of that money, the gas is expensive, it's, it's a pretty tough life. So those are the problems we're facing. And every time we bump up some of those dollars, it affects McDonald's, it affects your changing your oil, so we all feel that impact. And right now, the South is burying a lot of that because of all the people moving in. And typically, they have more money than others that are living here. Share your thoughts on that then, Rex. What do you, what, what do you see happening in our community for blue collar workers, for people who are laboring in our community?
Well, I think first of all, you've got to realize that the houses they're going in, you, you're talking thousand, fifteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
I, I maybe I need to rethink. Maybe they need to rethink. And let's go to the tiny homes type thing. But my understanding is the city and the county don't want these tiny homes. Is that correct?
We haven't discussed it, but I think that's the consensus.
Well, we don't wanna build, you hear people saying we don't wanna build any more homes, but we don't want tiny homes. I mean, the answer back in the day was the low-low parks.
Yep.
The low-income, and I say low cost, low-low parks. You know, we're not doing them anymore. I think rentals come out, if I'm not mistaken. Y'all are probably not allowing them here. I mean, the question is, do you want to try to figure out a solution that is affordable and not your 200 square foot, 1,500 square foot house? It's gotta be something different.
We gotta have answers. It's easy to identify problems, a lot harder to find a solution. And we have to have what I call town halls just to talk about some of these things, and that's the purpose. We'll share this in our community. We'd love to get feedback from other people that are not here tonight. We wanna know what people are thinking so we can lead that in the future and talk about these issues. Because at the end of the day, we wanna fix problems, not just identify. We wanna find ways of solving issues and casting vision and making sure that everybody has a fair representation. So that's it for tonight. Anybody wanna share anything other than what I've said? This is time to move.
For those of you who are in Easly that are unaware of what's going on in Pickens County, Monday night is the county council meeting, council of the whole. They will be talking about the UDSO, and they will specifically be talking about multifamily housing. If you want to express your views, come talk to your county council people so they know how you feel. It's not just an Easly issue, it's the whole county.
Yeah. It is the whole upstate problem. I mean, Sparkworks facing it, Gravel's facing it. And so we have to figure out answers to that. You can do that, I agree. It is important that we do that. But I will say this, county council is very busy, just like city council. The federal government is limited in what they can do. They don't have a problem, it's a disaster. But the UDSO is being rewritten. I remember when I was on the board, I participated in that for four years. So understand what they're trying to accomplish. The thing that you have to remember about the UDSO, what they're going to do is raise the standards. What does that mean to y'all? It means they're either gonna go to high density or they're going to go with a concept of how they're going to control lot sizes, how they're gonna control buffers and setbacks. They're gonna control how they create neighborhoods so that more people can live comfortably in those zones. Our UDSO four years ago was at a bare minimum of almost very little. That standard is being raised. I think the city's trying to raise their UDSO. But what problem do you think the UDSO solves for us? Someone tell me. Ken?
I mean, it's gonna give people a standard, but it's also gonna limit some people from what they can do with their property.
Are you for or against it?
It's a, it's, you can't, it's not a black and white. This is a kaleidoscope. You cannot have a specific issue that's gonna solve the problem throughout the whole county because you've got different people who live in those different parts. Easly's totally different than Clemson. Clemson's totally different than Central. Central's totally different than Liberty. They all have their own issues. But the thing is, is if you want to have a set, you've got to show up or at least have a conversation with your county council representative. I've been to those meetings for on and on and on, and I'm seeing the same people. I don't see anybody new. I don't know who watches it online, but it's the same people talking about the same issues and coming up with the same answers. If you want something different to happen in Easly, you've gotta show up. Simple as that. Just like everybody needs to vote, no matter what they feel.
Yep. Well, let's think about it this way. Everybody that gets elected to a position is not qualified. Some people that get elected, get elected because they're pretty or whatever. But far as ability, they don't have it. I know that's hard to say, but I know a lot of elected people that have absolutely zero ability. And so if I'm gonna talk to an elected official that has zero ability, I know that's harsh, but it's true. I see some people out there, and I stretch my head. How did you get elected? I'm not gonna put my faith in that person. I'm gonna do a go-around and, like, tonight, talk about the problems and talk about solutions. I'm glad we're doing the UDSO, but the UDSO will never, ever stop a developer. Never. By law, it is not designed to do that. So if you think raising the standard of UDSO is gonna control development, you're saddened. It's not gonna happen. Because what a developer's gonna do is just say, okay, instead of doing this twice, I gotta do it three times. Instead of costing 100, it's gonna cost 150 bucks. And what they're gonna do is say, well, I'm not marketing to your kids. I'm not trying to sell to locals. Eight out of 10 homes that are sold in Pickens County are sold to people from the North. Well, who has all the money? The people from the North. These people gotta sell their homes. Their homes are two or three times the value of ours. So if you're living in New York, your home is 1 to 2 million dollars. So what's a 500,000-dollar home down here? You think the developer is worried about that? He's not worried about that. You know how much this is gonna slow development down? Zero. Zero. You can raise all the standards you want. All you're telling a developer is that instead of putting curb and gutter, you want to put a sidewalk. Okay, that's no problem. I got people to pay for that. You gotta put lights, and you gotta do nightlight over here. You gotta have a buffer. Okay, so what? They're not selling that home. You're selling that home to somebody in Cleveland. How is it gonna come down here and buy that home? What do they care if the cost is 5,000 or 10,000 or even 50,000 dollars? Has it slowed anything down? Of course not. Moratoriums are not gonna help us. The UDSO is not gonna fix the problems of development in Pickens County. If someone would like to come on my show and explain to me how they're gonna do that, I'd love for them to do that. Because I know the market's not us. Like I said, it's the people with the money. They don't care. So it's not gonna change anything. We have to fix some of this with new ideas and new perspective on how we wanna see things developed. And to do that, the big issue here is building housing, low income for people who are living and have lived here all their lives, who now can't afford to rent a home. Those are our issues that we need to be talking about. Those are the things that are the biggest problems. Where you get the money from the federal government, the private sector, it doesn't matter. But we gotta figure out who's gonna do this. And my issue is, I just don't think we have, always have the right teams in place that are elected to get that done. If you're a retroactive thinker, how you gonna cast vision? I've never seen, and I'm a, I'm a, the entrepreneur. I understand how money works. I understand how the ability works. I understand how city government works. And just because somebody's elected doesn't mean they have ability. Do you believe that? You gotta know that's not true. I mean, look, we got Washington to help. So I mean, I'm just saying, people don't always elect people with ability. They elect people because, well, that person seems to have good character. That person's nice. That person's this. Okay, but that doesn't mean anything when you're in a crisis and you're fighting a war and you gotta dig yourself out of a ditch. You gotta have people that have hit the ball, that can make things happen. And we're in a place in our community where if we don't solve those issues in 10, 20 years, where we gonna be? What's your thought? Come on, we're close.
Well, I, 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 uh...
And you don't have to worry, we're gonna just save it for that.
No, I don't know what you're saying, but I'll, I think that you, if you do zoning correctly and you write the UDSO correctly and put in certain standards, instead of a 1,200 housing development being built, that builder can only put 600 in there. That won't stop them from coming, but it'll cut half of it coming down. Instead of having 2,400 cars a day, if every house in there had two cars hitting that road, you would only have 1,200. But if you also enforce them in building out and the roads and putting the ingresses and the outgresses from these neighborhoods like it should be doing, they're not doing. And they put the expense out instead of the citizen living here paying the taxes to do it,